All right, I'm going to go ahead and call us to order for the work session of the Board of Commissioners addressing the CIP process. And Jeff is here. I'm going to turn it over to you, Al, because I think you and Jeff are going to lead us through the materials that have been distributed and see where we go.
Yes, I will kick it off. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the 2023 Administrative CIP Recommendation was first distributed on June 22nd. Then we also sent it out again last Friday. And basically, the recommendations, the requests that were reviewed and recommendations have been made by the CIP Review Team. And so you have basically a consensus recommendation from that group. And I should say, maybe not every single one, but the strong, strong majority of all CIP is represented by the staff that are on this committee. And so the team consists of Facilities Management Director, IT Director, the Sheriff Finance Division Director, Fiscal Services Deputy Fiscal Services and Purchasing Manager. And then, of course, all projects were evaluated based on health and safety, liability, prior binding commitments and mandates, operational issues, annual operating maintenance costs, who do we have funding for from externally, life expectancy and strategic alignment. We had 61 projects requested totaling 17.3 million. The recommendation you have before you is to fund 38 projects in the CIP totaling 7.9 million, supported by 7.5 million from the General Fund, which is about .25 mils. It is also proposed that eight projects be handed through other alternatives, bringing the total recommended projects funded to 46, which is about 75% of the projects requested. Of the remaining 15, 10 were deferred and five will require further vetting for future consideration. So, and again, we did send out in June, and again, the total list of projects, you could see everything. And then I should also note that we will have each of the areas that make up the CIP Team present on the major, about three of each, and then obviously kick it open for any Q and A and any board questions and that type of thing. One last point. So, you know, we talked during the interview process about whether or not it was appropriate to have a Commissioner on the CIP Review Team. The process that we went through to make sure we had input from all 19 of you was to, during strategic planning, we asked that you give input at that time as far as any capital projects you were interested in. Just so we wouldn't get to this point, I think last year there was some controversy over parks restrooms, and that came up. I don't know. I don't know the whole story. I wasn't here.
Controversy is a bit harsh.
But, I don't know. Okay, I wasn't here, so I won't comment, but.
We concluded everyone needs a good restroom.
Restrooms for all. You're right, anyways. But I guess the point is, we wanted to front-load the process with your ideas so that we could handle them in a rational manner. And so that brings us to today. And so, in order, we will have Al Jano, Tim Beck, Dan DeLuft, and Michelle Young, and anyone else they would like to have accompany them or speak. So, if it's okay, why don't we start off with Al Jano?
Come on down, Al.
Come on down. Nice recap. Thank you for that, Al, for setting our groundwork there that we all worked so hard on to do. Want to talk briefly about our recommended projects, recommended for funding projects. I kind of broke ours, Facilities Management, down into three major categories such as safety and security, mechanical projects, and then general facility improvements. And you've had the opportunity to review them, so I will be brief, but it, of course, leaves time for some questions. Courthouse and AD2 Ionia Window Security Film, I think you're familiar with that product. We'd want to apply that on the first-floor windows of those two facilities. Replace the animal shelter locks from wear and tear and aging. And then replace a fire alarm panel here in this building under the City-County Work Plan Project. And then mechanical projects include the first phase of the Health Department HVAC. That's a three-year, about a $1.5 million overall project. And then variable frequency drives over at our courthouse, main elevators. We did some last year, or this year, and would finish that project up next year if it was funded. And then the courthouse cooling tower fill replacement. It's kind of a reconditioning of the cooling tower for the air conditioning. Then the general facilities improvements, animal shelter flooring, that's a wear item in an animal shelter, and that was constructed and put online in 2009. Replace that flooring in 63rd District Court. Audiovisual upgrade, fuller lab demo, admin building blinds, these vertical blinds that go to horizontal. City-county accessibility improvements in this building, animal shelter kennel painting, Health Department carpet, Human Services parking lot, and courthouse carpet. Other projects that you have listed on your sheets, I broke those down into another three projects. These are the ones that were not funded. They're either deferred or items that I say you'll probably see within the next two years again, or items that are funded by another method. And the ones that are deferred for this year until some further vetting and planning can be done would be the SEPTED project, the AD2 Ionia projects, of which there are three. Now on those, we've, over the years, we continue to defer a few projects, but we always prioritize and we do not defer for recommendation projects that won't make it another year or so. So you needn't worry about urgent projects that are being deferred. We just don't do that, or we don't make that recommendation. And then the transformational work environment. Four, five projects that you'll probably see in the next two years are the detention water monitoring and shut-off system, tractor to replace the tractor down at Human Services Facility for snow removal, our energy metering, 63rd District Court seating, you'll probably see that next year, and Human Services chiller. Human Services chiller, that wouldn't have been deferred except we had to do some emergency repair on that this year, and so we need to run it another year or two to gain efficiency from that. And do you have any questions on any of those facilities projects?
Any questions for Al on these? Just, I did have, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I do have one. On the chairs for the courts, why, that one isn't like, there isn't a one in front of that number. I'm just confused, how bad are those chairs?
You mean, a one in front of that number meaning?
It's 65,000. It's not 165,000.
Well, we're not talking the major court, the main courthouse here. We're talking Nap of the Belt Line, opened in 2009.
Right. I haven't seen them, so I just, have you actually looked at the chairs?
I'm on pretty much every facility, every couple of weeks. So yes, I've seen them. And then we put really, really, really good chairs in there. There's a couple that have failed, and they were under warranty until two years ago still. And we just thought that we could, in consistency with other departments and the other courthouse, we could certainly get another year out of them.
Okay.
Buys three new chairs for our judges. Is that what that does?
No. Actually, to that point, Chair, judges have gotten away from the gigantic, expensive, very uncomfortable chairs. They've gone with something much more practical, and it's also less expensive. I'll give them credit for that. I guess I just did.
They should stand like council. All right, yes?
I'll say, we did have a very well-attended brown bag lunch at that location, and I would concur that we can get through another year or so.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I see in a few of these items, we have a footnote suggesting that it require, or that it's proposed to be addressed via other alternatives. I know that, you know, DC1 relocation, we just spoke about, Finance. What's the alternate for the Human Services chiller replacement?
Oh, the Human Services chiller replacement, that's the one that I shared that we just did. We did some repairs to spring to it, some of the cooling bundles.
Okay, sorry.
So now that we've done so many of them, we should probably run it for another year.
And then the second question, some of these, you know, looking at the, for instance, you mentioned the juvenile detention water management system and the reduction in usage and savings from that. You know, when we, you know, now that I've gone through a number of these, and there are always projects that end up not getting recommended, when it comes to conservation efforts like this, have we ever examined a performance contract method to finance it? So, you know, I know that municipalities are open to using tax-exempt lease purchase agreements to finance some of these, which would be not a debt financing tool and is intended to be cash flow positive. So I just wonder if that's a way of helping spread these dollars, spread our CIP dollars further by examining that device for, and that financial tool for conservation efforts?
Jeff Nod and Marvin Van Norwood might be able to speak more on that, but my familiarization with it is, I wouldn't in good conscience bring any of those to you. Again, we're Kent County. We're able to do it ourselves and save the money. It's, there's actually substantial savings in self-performance and paying for it on our own rather than going through a third party.
I understand that, but it's more, if the matter is a delay of a year or other projects not getting funded, I just, in a world where we're always trying to find ways to maximize how many projects we can fund, even if it doesn't have as much savings, I wonder if the value of being able to speed up projects, cover more projects, might be maybe worth the loss in net benefit to the county doing it themselves.
Personally, I might look at that as going backwards from the way we've always done it. Kent County's always been really good and independently capable of financing the projects and priorities. The project that you mentioned, the juvenile detention, I think that was about a six-figure project, and the return on investment was not justifiable at this time. However, we are examining our efficiencies, you know. We did a substantial, it was $13.5 million renovation of that building, and we're seeing how much labor we're putting into the new controls that we have out there, the Sloan valves and such. And in our discussion with our CIP Review Team, we decided that it might be best to run the facility another year or two and see if we were having the problems that we've had before, where we need to shut off so many things. To your point, the conservation effort, I totally am 100% with you on that, and these were installed, I want to say, two years ago over at the main correctional facility, and they've been working wonderful. But remember, we're a, what, 98, 99-bed facility, so the economies of scale aren't quite there. But excellent point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Chair, good morning, Al. A couple of points, your 17 and 18, when we're replacing existing equipment. In regards to the Bobcat and that B-3030 Kubota, are those going to be retired or are they going to be reused?
We're going to shift a couple of things around to get another year or two out of them.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner LaGranne.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions. One is, I'm curious about the audiovisual upgrade, and what's the life expectancy on that? That's almost something more I'd expect to see in a, like, IT budget or something. So it seems like, you know, categorically different from carpets and chairs and such. But any guess on that?
We followed, we followed the model that we use for 63rd District Court. Commissioner, we followed the model that we used over at our main Circuit Court, 180. Our facilities handles those projects, and of course, we always work in concert and harmony with IT on what we do. Our IT operates the equipment that's provided through here. We've gotten a little over 10 years out of it already. Again, that was a new building in 2009, so not too bad, but there's small upgrades from time to time. This is a little bit larger upgrade, but not gigantic.
Yeah, I mean, I would expect them to need to be updated frequently. That was just my question. Thanks. And then the other question is, I'm just very curious about the crime prevention through environmental design, which I see we're implementing immediately, but just want to state for the record that that's something I'd like to learn more about.
We have a resident expert, and he's sitting right at the head of the table.
That's what I hear. So at some future point, I would, it's very intriguing and...
And our sheriff has some resident-trained experts also.
Yeah, I could just very quickly summarize that. Basically, it's an effort to, the sheriff has, sheriff, is it 11 or 13, or a number of her staff are certified to evaluate facilities through this lens, and they have worked with the schools already. And what I would like to do, which I've done before also, is to put together a county team, have them look at our facilities, and it's almost like a separate effort to make sure we're doing everything we can to make sure our facilities are safe for our employees and those who we serve. And, I mean, it can be, it looks at the total picture. So do we have landscaping that's growing in such a way that somebody could hide behind it near the entrance to a building and conk someone over the head? I mean, so we really want to look at all those factors that, inside and outside, and have really a separate effort that focuses just on that. And so in the future, you'll see some dollars attached to actually doing some of that work. And we will have an internal team that will kick off hopefully soon that will start that work.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? I just have a couple, Al. So on the components of the courthouse modifications, you have other here, and I assume that's the City of Grand Rapids contribution for those costs.
Yes, sir.
Is that discretionary on their part, or if we decide to go ahead, they have an obligation to co-fund?
They have a contractual obligation, well, a lease obligation.
To co-fund?
Yeah, to partial fund, yes. And we always confer with the 61st District Court Administrator and their facilities team in advance of these projects, too, so they know they're coming.
And then my other comment is just, again, on the 325, Al and I were talking, don't take it down until we own it, okay, for the state police lab. Thank you.
Those are all excellent questions. Thank you very much. Before I turn it over to Tim Beck from IT, I would like to cover the zoo, if that's okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. Also joining us today is Alman Forrester, the zoo's director of facilities, planning and sustainability. Alman, yeah, Alman remains here. Thank you for being here, Alman. Two projects were funded, five were requested, two projects were funded. It's the aquarium boiler replacement, it's aging out, and accessible ramp to the administration building. We did some water work there, replacement of some drain lines, and we had to remove the existing ramp, I want to say, I don't know, over five years ago. It was showing its age then, it's aged more now. So those two projects were funded, and Alman and his team are delighted by that, of course. There's, similar to some of the projects I shared with you from Facilities, the admin restroom is up for some further planning and option of how to stage that when you're dealing with restrooms that affect other areas, inside and outside. Hoofstock air handler, just like some of the other things that we do, figured they could go another year or two on that because some of the primary components have been replaced. And the service drive that's been there since 1980 is still under consideration for potential other funding or future funding. And of course, the zoo can always do any architectural engineering work in advance on any of these projects, too.
All right, any questions on the zoo? Yes, Mr. Bukowski.
Just a comment. Thank you for including the zoo CIP history, so I didn't have to ask. So whoever put that in there, thank you. And then the language from the agreement, so I mean, I have no concerns about the issues, just the thank you.
All right, anything else? Yes. Okay. I saw you reaching for the hand, so I just knew. Commissioner Hennessy.
I would just note with the zoo, too, I mean, we do own the facility itself and have a responsibility to the upkeep of that total facility. And then we're lucky enough to have found a good partner to operate the facility through the John Ball Zoo Board. So it's always a thoughtful process.
And you have Alman, an extra secret weapon.
You know, we have Alman, yeah.
It's always a delight. Thank you very much for your time this morning, and thank you for your continued support.
All right, thank you. Oh, wait, we have one question from Commissioner.
I don't have a question. Chair, may I make a comment?
You may make a comment.
Okay. Al, I just want to say thank you very much. It takes a lot of work to make sure that all of the properties that we have are maintained, that they're looking good, that they're presentable to the public, and I want to say thank you for that work that you do and your team.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me. Thank you very, very much.
All right. Oh, did you have another question or comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to go to that last page and follow up on Commissioner Hennessy's comment. So we own the zoo, but yet we have a contract that has a limit on the 2.6 million or December of 2027. Is that for CIP, for capital improvement funding? But yet, if we own it, does our obligation for capital improvement funding ever really end?
Let me take it?
Yeah, sure.
Under the terms of the agreement, the Zoo Society took the zoo in its then-current condition and took on all of the obligations for general capital, maintenance, and everything else. That's spelled out in the agreement. This ability to apply for CIP funding through the normal course and be considered on the same criteria as all the other county departments is an exception to that assumption of obligation. So if the Zoo Society ever turns the zoo back over to us, then it's all on us again. But while the Zoo Society runs it, under the terms of the agreement, the standard maintenance and capital is within that contract for the Zoo Society to run.
So, do you, I mean, does that make sense to you, too, Carol? Do you follow that? I just want to make sure that that's understood in this mix with this contract agreement.
One, there is no more a Zoo Society. It is a John Ball Zoo Board, no society. I personally hope that we go back over and we look at this when, you know, when the time comes, because I'm not sure, agreeing with your question, I'm not sure that there is an end to the time that we have an obligation to take care of the facilities there, especially given the condition on which we turned them over to the zoo.
Well, I think that, didn't the contract obli-
But that's a future.
Yeah, the contract obligated us to contribute to a cumulative amount of 2.6 million in capital projects.
The contract did not obligate us to contribute to 2.6. It limited their ability to request if we, in fact, did appropriate 2.6. You're not obligated to contribute a dime.
For further discussion, probably. All right, Tim, I think we're up to you on information technology.
Good morning, excuse me, good morning again. By way of comparison, IT is pretty simple, I think, this year compared to Parks and Sheriff. But for 2023, IT has submitted three projects, two of which are being considered for funding from alternate sources. But briefly, enterprise storage expansion. This is our high-value storage where we run our line of business applications. There are two of these, one in each of our data centers. And based on our current projections, it will be 90% full within the year, and so we are looking to expand that, again, being considered for alternate sources, or funding from alternate sources. Project 31, VMware Server Refresh, this is basically a lifecycle replacement. Some of our server hardware is aging. It's approximately, this equipment is between six and seven years old, and it's just due to be replaced. And again, that is also being proposed to be funded through alternative sources, so. But Project 92, OnBase Enhancement, this one is recommended. This one is really, looking at our OnBase document management system, is really a result of increased usage, adoption, and I would characterize it as the maturity of that product as it continues to evolve in the county. There's three areas we're looking to approve. One is taking a look at email importing into OnBase. Currently, we wrote something in-house that does it prior to them releasing some modules that have this capability, so we're looking to move from what we wrote, which of course is excellent, to what they wrote, which is even better, and integrate it into that from a support perspective. They're better able to support that. That's one area. The second area is one of considerable interest to us, and that is the access of documents from Access Kent. Currently, that document is stored statically on Access Kent. If it's a PDF, a meeting agenda, something like, something else. This is a module called Public Constituency that allows the request for retrieval of documents to point internally to OnBase rather than having another copy of that stored on Access Kent. So that's a big one for us. It relieves a lot of the stagnant stale data on Access Kent and allows, I think, for a better end-user experience if you're retrieving documents off of Access Kent. So we are excited about that one. And then the last one, just improved search capabilities within OnBase. Currently, you need to identify keywords. When you put a document in, a document type, you have to put in keywords that can help you find it later or help others find it. This broadens that search capability, much like you're Googling or something and you're looking for certain keywords, and the indexing does the work. So three good capabilities, so.
All right, questions for Tim? Yes, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. First comment, yeah, the OnBase improvements sound great, especially when it comes to document retrieval. You know, I think if you're trying to find some decision we've made as a board, in all likelihood, you have to know the date we met to pull the minutes, not necessarily items beyond that. So I think that's great. When it comes to the other two items that are, you know, planned to be served by other means, could you describe that a little more?
The projects or the funding sources?
The funding sources.
So for the funding sources for these two, what we're looking at doing is we've got a couple of IT-approved CIPs already that are, let's call them overfunded. We just came in under budget, so we're looking to repurpose those to fund these.
Fantastic, thank you.
Other questions, comments? All right, and I think the big one, the DC1 relocation, was addressed this morning at Finance. All right, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Dan. All right, Dan DeLuft, Parks.
So I'll touch on a few of our major projects we have submitted for next year. Some of the highest-dollar ones we have are pavement maintenance at several of our parks and our paved trails throughout the county. We also have $400,000 in for routine playground maintenance at two parks. You'll notice that the Fallsburg Park, line number 40, is a little bit higher, and that's because there are three playgrounds within that park itself. So when we do replacements, we try to do a park at a time versus spreading that around, one each at several different locations, so. At Kaufman Golf Course, we are looking to have an add-on to our existing cart facility. And we currently lease those golf carts, and they are gas right now. And in the future, we expect, or we would prefer to go to electric. It allows us to control them via a computer inside the clubhouse. We can keep track of where people are and try to minimize some damage and maintenance that way. That lease is up in, I believe it's two years, so this would be in anticipation to be able to switch over to electric at that time. And we also have a project at Dwight Laddell Park. We're partnering with the Comstock Park DDA to upgrade the water wheel location, which would include enhancements and accessibility to it. And also, there's a World War II memorial there that we would like to provide better access. Really, it's just grass around there now. We'd really like to make it more of a park-like setting, a little pocket park. And also have that tie into the Kent District Library, which is on the opposite side of Mill Creek, so. Those are the major projects we asked for and that are funded.
All right, questions or comments for Dan? Yes, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I have an issue with the money that we're spending at the golf course. You know, we are competing with privately-owned public courses, and they don't get taxpayer dollars to help. It's a tough market right out there right now, as you know, and a lot of the courses are really struggling, if not closing. And I've, over the years, I've gotten a lot of complaints from people and say, hey, what's it, why does the county own a golf course? You know, we can't compete with that. And I look at this additional spending as something that maybe we ought to rethink a little bit. One of the issues I have is with the, let me see if I can find that. The issue number 38. You know, typically, a superintendent that went through turf grass management school, he can do all this stuff. he can do all this stuff, including architecture, and that's what they do. They, they can do a little bit of everything. Having worked for a couple of different private country clubs growing up, these guys are magicians. And so I'm wondering why we have to hire, you know, an architect to come in and do some of this when the superintendent should be well-versed in doing. This isn't anything really that complicated. So anyhow, that's just my general thought, is I think we need to rethink putting more money into, let them kind of just operate based on the market, how much money are they taking in, and use that money for these additional costs. I just don't think it's fair to the, the private courses in the area who are competing with us, so. I hope you take it in the spirit intended. It's just something I hear quite a bit of, and I tend to agree with them. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Wlakowski.
I guess, real quick follow-up on Commissioner Antor's question. Is the golf course, like, operate as an enterprise fund? Or does all the revenue just go into kind of the parks pot and then you pay out of the pot?
It's not an enterprise fund. Any excess revenue that will, so currently, we do cover all of our costs and plus a percentage. That percentage helps fund other park operations, and any excess from that, it's put back into the County General Fund.
All right, thanks. The main comment, maybe you can tease a question out of it. I'm surprised how modest your requests are this year. In the recent past, you know, we've, we've had potential matching for some significant, you know, DNR grants for, you know, really growing our regional parks, which I support, you know, out Lowell. I mean, here it talks about the Thornapple River Bend green space, but the development, not more purchase. So again, I, yeah, based on how much you oversee, because there are a lot of parks, not what we want yet, but there still are, that, this seems pretty modest.
So you can expect a significant ask for ARPA funding from us? And then the DNR is also setting aside ARPA funds through a grant process that we will be aggressively pursuing.
Wait for the rest of the story, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Kent is also in the happer for 7 million from the feds for the Greenway project that we hoped, we made it through round one, and so there's more, more to come.
You will be paying for it, just not through County Funds, I guess.
Well, it's all our money.
Correct.
Right, Commissioner Antor?
It's all our money.
So thank you, thank you. So today, modesty. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions. One is related to the Kaufman Golf Course expenditure for the electric golf carts. What's the, we currently lease the, the gas power.
Correct.
And what's the annual lease payment on that?
Boy, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head.
I just, you know, I wonder, you know, given the benefit, while I have similar, I've had similar thoughts about whether a county and whether a government should own a golf course personally. We do own the golf course, and if we're trying to manage it to the best of our abilities, I wonder if purchasing this equipment may come at a larger benefit, and moreover, the ability to, the aforementioned benefits that you, that you've mentioned beyond its fuel, but the, the ability to control it from the, the, whatever, wherever you're managing it from, I certainly see as a, as a benefit. And if I understand correctly, also, electric engines typically have less ongoing maintenance as gas engines. And lastly, I mean, I, I've golfed once in my entire life. It's not a huge, it's not something I partake in personally, but I gotta believe not having as many gas stews around you would also make the experience a little more positive. But maybe that's just a personal choice, but.
I would say that noise, yes.
Yeah.
Depends how many swings you take, I think.
Okay. So I, my, my, my question was the lease payment, but that came with those comments. My, my second question was actually regarding Dwight Liddell. How many, can we find out, you probably don't have it on, off the top of your head, but can we find out how many CIP requests we have granted to Dwight Liddell over the last 10 years or so? Only because, you know, it is a pocket park, and there have been discussions whether or not that should be a park transferred to the local township, given its size. I've visited it before, it's, it's a very nice park. I certainly see the value we've put into it. I just wonder, given its size, whether it is, and the fact that, you know, while it's very nice, it, it doesn't necessarily have a, a unique enough feature to be a regional draw. And so I just wonder how many of the capital expenditures we've put towards Dwight Liddell and the costs we're incurring were it, it could be a valuable idea to, to transfer ownership to the township.
I'm fairly certain that our fiscal services team can pull that together and.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I'm curious about how we determine the order of when playground, play structures get replaced.
So we obviously track when we install them, and then roughly around the 20-year mark, depending on use, we track how many dollars we put in maintenance cost into each one of those. So it's a combination of age, use, maintenance that we put into them. But between the years of, you know, between 20 and 25 years, we know that things are going to start.
We're close to like 30 for Fallsburg then, right? Didn't you say that was mid 90s?
Yeah.
Yeah, because my, my impression is that it's pretty outdated. It's kind of a general thing for the county, so I would just argue for shortening that lifespan on the play structures, especially if you, we really want families going to those parks, so.
So one thing about Fallsburg, there's some older equipment there that people really, really like, and they have told us if we ever get rid of it, we're going to be in trouble.
Okay. Are you replacing it now?
We, we will, yeah.
Oh, boy. Okay. Good luck.
Public relations issued up for us to deal with.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I think that our ability to offer a lot of recreation and park options for our community is a phenomenal piece for our quality of life. And that includes the golf course component. One of the questions that I have that might run counter to some other folks, but I'll voice this anyways, I know other municipalities, counties that have golf courses, but they also have that in the winter open for cross-country skiing. Do we do that?
We do.
And I just think that's an important note with that property, because that's a really important aspect for additional services there. Are we at a point where we rent out ski equipment to there?
As well.
Yep. So I just thought I would.
Extremely busy the last, you know, through COVID, so, yeah, lines out the door waiting, people waiting for skis, so.
Yep, just thought I would add that as a additional component with that that's really, I believe, important and a lot of benefit to our county. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Just real quickly, I may have missed this, I'm sure I did, the Wallfield Park, is that dog park component still happening on that? They were talking about turning that into at one point.
That, yes, that is a phase two that we have proposed for ARPA funding for. It's not currently in this CIP prep.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. Just a note on the paving maintenance on the M6 trail. I think that's a great recommendation. I've heard that a lot, you know, as I'm talking to constituents the last several weeks. That gets a lot of use, and there are some areas where trees have kind of made some ruts and people have launched off their bikes, so I think it's important to continually maintain that, so, great recommendation.
All right, just a quick question, Dan. When are we up for a master plan review at Parks?
That will be next year, we'll start that.
Next year, okay.
Possibly, maybe last quarter this year.
Okay, so some of these questions that are coming up will have to be addressed at that point. Yep. All right, thank you.
Last but not least, the Sheriff's Department.
You got something to say?
Always, always. Thanks for this opportunity to talk through some of our CIP proposals. I would say these aren't the shiny, brand-new kind of stuff things this year. These are really just very functional things for the Sheriff's Department, but I do want to highlight a couple. First on our list, Officer Safety and Rescue Task Force equipment. So you're seeing a lot on the news right now about school response and having the appropriate equipment in the appropriate place to allow for as quick a response as possible. So this is essentially go-bag equipment that would go into every unit so that the closest unit can respond to school and have some basic elements available to them immediately when they get to the scene. Very, like, shield equipment, helmet equipment, ways to try to get through locked doors, things like that are what you'd see in these go-bags. It would correspond, we've also submitted an ARPA request for some communication equipment, so you're going to hear us talk a little bit more about helping us be the most prepared we can for a school incident countywide. So that will go with that, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Most of this stuff, as you're reading through it, I'm sure you can understand why we would need it. But Property Room Mail Screening System is something I'll just point, highlight. There is a pretty significant security importance, if you will, on incoming mail. So things such as drugs can be sent laced with mail into the correctional facility, so it's something we have to screen for. There can also be items hidden within the mail. So this equipment just helps us screen the mail as it's coming in more efficiently and making sure that physical documents that are delivered to inmates, sometimes even under legal mail header, isn't hiding something more serious, and we just need to make sure we keep the facility safe. I'll highlight the feasibility study for the Fleet Services Building. As you all know, we're in the process of building a new Fleet Services. It's on the north part of the Sheriff's Department campus, but what would be vacated is the garage space that's within our Sheriff's Building, and we're hoping to really make sure that that's not just used a little bit set apart at a time, you know, and nothing comprehensive. We actually do need some additional meeting space, so we, we're asking for a feasibility study so that we can evaluate how that facility would be best used. We also have some locker room needs that will, that will be pressing here pretty quick. When we built the Sheriff's Admin Building in 2001, the represented, representation of women in the force was significantly, significantly less than it is now. We don't have enough locker space for the percentage of women that we hire, I'm happy to say. So things like that are what we'd be evaluating in that. The only other thing, intake renovation, which is item 93 on this list, so that is a 1992 facility. It's obviously the highest-used portion of our entire building, because everybody has to come through intake. It needs some reorganization to be conducive to today's needs and operations and equipment, and a facelift pretty desperately. So those are just the highlights, but I'm happy to ask any questions that I didn't, didn't talk about.
All right, any questions or comments for our sheriff? Yes, Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say thank you to you as well, because there is a delicate balance of having the type of job that you do, being a woman, plus being bad A, you know what I mean? Like, people don't run you over, and I like that. I like that you stick to your guns. There's a pun there, I guess. But I like that you stick to the mission of Kent County, that you respect your employees, we have a great undersheriff as well, and that you're putting your team members in place to do what we need to do to be effective, but also to care about our community. So I just want to let you know that is not gone unnoticed. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? So Sheriff, was it last year that we talked about training facilities for the Sheriff Department? And I think that we approved that. I don't see anything here, so I assume that that's all up and operational and.
Well, it's in progress right now, so.
But you don't need more money for that? That's.
Not yet.
Is that another ARPA?
That's not ARPA, that is a CIP-funded project for this year. It is underway. It actually just really kicked off in terms of the actual construction. We did have some changes to the CIP request. Initially, we thought we needed a new HVAC, and although we may still need at some point a new HVAC for that facility, we couldn't afford it. So we're modifying our existing and extending its lifespan, and then we are installing the virtual reality equipment within the current range. We're also updating it for safety and health reasons. We use frangible ammunition in our range, so the dust particles are very dangerous, and they have to be managed and cleaned sufficiently. And so that equipment needs to all go together. So we're excited about that project. I'm going to have an open house once it's done and we can kind of demo the equipment. My guess is first part of next year before we're ready to show anything off, but we do plan on using it for staff even yet this year.
Great, because I think we all agree, training is, is essential at this point. Is it a facility that has capacity to be used by other departments in Kent County?
Yes, and in fact, we do use that facility for anybody who asks within Kent County. We also facilitate training for our two local police academies, GRCC and Grand Valley State. They do most of their firearm training within our facility, and as a matter of fact, it's one of my favorite recruiting tools. Many of my staff are trainers at the academy, and so we get a first look at all the people going through training and make sure that they're trained right. And then we cherry pick the best ones off and offer them jobs when they're done, so it kind of works out well for all of us to have a good facility there and to make sure we're part of the fabric of training. We also offer it up to all other departments. Many of the other departments qualify with our staff during our qualification times, and we see it as a countywide resource.
Okay, so when we do that, do we also provide trainings personnel along with that process?
Depends on the department. Many cases, yes, we will, because they're joining our training lines, so side by side with our staff, we'll provide the trainers. But if they have like a specific training and they just need the facility, I do have people present for safety reasons. We have had some incidents prior to that being our policy where they didn't follow the safety protocol. There's an incident that happens in the range, so we do have personnel on scene all the time.
And when we offer that to other departments, do they have to pay for that, or is this a service that we provide?
The only time they would have to pay, and it would be kind of at our, like, special event rate, is if it's for specific personnel that have to be on site, that would be outside of our normal hours and outside of our normal resources. It's pretty unusual.
All right.
There is a nominal fee that the academies pay, and that has to do with equipment use and equipment that will wear and tear, and then will have to replace targets, things like that.
And do our departments in the county take advantage of this?
Yes.
Great, great. Okay, look what I did. Commissioner Antor.
Thought of training, that's the first thing. I was wondering, this is really going to date me, but do they still have programs like LETN, which was Law Enforcement Training Network?
I was just trying to remember the initials, that is a flashback.
They used to beam that into departments, and I thought it was pretty efficient, pretty effective, because they, they covered a wide range of things, so you didn't need a lot of space for it. Came in over TV and we'd, you know, sit there and watch the latest and greatest training. I was just wondering if that's still out there, things like that.
Police One is probably the most popular thing that would be similar to what you're talking about, and we do subscribe to Police One, although we don't do it department-wide, because briefing times are so much different now than what they used to be, like when you and I would have been early in our careers. Very expensive to have long periods of time where the whole group's sitting together. So most training that can be done individually is dispersed into modules that somebody would do on their own during free time, perhaps while they're at break or on patrol in a remote area or in the. area or in the correctional facility, sometimes at their workstation. And then we try to really capitalize on interactive training when we're all together and really try to optimize those types of training that need somebody sitting next to you, interacting to really get the most out of it. Physical training, things that might have a lot of questions, new material, things that have a lot of case law to it, like use of force or de-escalation, those are the things we try to do when we're all together in person.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. The cell door and lock replacements in the older facility, we started on part of that. We've, we allocated $3 million, and that's been started. I don't know what the progress is and, and what remains. You know, right now, you're not recommending it for the near term, but it'll be coming up again to fund it.
We will be addressing that. It was, it was addressed in Finance this morning.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear Finance this morning. Okay.
Okay. And, and it'll be coming to the full board.
It's underway, though, is the short answer. It's underway.
Okay. So, we're, we're using the $3 million that we previously recommended?
Yep.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Michelle? If not, thank you very much.
Pleasure to be here. I appreciate all your help.
I would just like to thank the CIP teams. We have Jeff Marvin and everyone who presented today. Also, just to reiterate, that next year, we'll be asking you to consider a five-year plan. I think it helps us, we do get, it's not that we don't get, we don't know in some cases, some areas, what's coming over the next five years, but having a, a formal adopted five-year CIP is more of a best practice. We actually get some points from the rating agencies if we do it, and so, I think that, you know, the way that'll come down is you'll approve the five-year plan, but only year one is active. Then the next year, year two bumps up to year one with whatever modifications are recommended and you approve, and it just keeps rolling forward like that. And it's a good way just to plan better, I think, for some of these major things, so.
All right. Good. Any other miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to add that in the eight years I've been a commissioner, how much improvement the CIP process has seen. And I think for those who don't have that history, this is a really important note. We've really continued to focus on best practices, and I really support the idea of going with the five-year look and add that to this mix. It's wonderful being a part of this, and I think it's very important for Commissioner participation, and it's fabulous, too, that it's not one committee-specific. This is the opportunity for the entire board to participate in this important component of our budget through these work sessions, and I really commend this process, and I love the fact we continue to improve it, and that as a government entity, we've been open to improvements and doing things differently than they've always been done, and I'm glad to have been a part of that, and everyone here who's also contributed to that, kudos to us for continuing to make this better. And I think this is one of the best CIP processes we've had in the eight years I've been here. So, thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we are adjourned.